Good evening. Tonight is our regular board meeting. It's Thursday, March 1st. We're in the Berlin Room of Olentangy Education Offices. Mrs. Hatfield, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bartsch.
Ms. Ebsen.
Mrs. Feesel.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
And Mrs. Patrick.
Here.
Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Correct.
A second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mrs. Feesel.
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to start off with the Board's President's Report. And I wanted to say that I'm really glad February was over. I think it was a very, very difficult month. We lost one of our own students at Liberty High School. Our neighboring community lost two highly regarded police officers. And then, of course, the tragic shooting in Parkland, Florida. So, for the most part, I'm hoping that March is a much better month. With these, you know, tragic events comes a lot of emotion and concern, and rightfully so. And I grew up in an era where news coverage was usually accurate. I don't feel that it's necessarily that way anymore. And that there's a lot of comments and opinions that are being shared that have escalated certain situations. I took this opportunity to sit down and speak with my children about the consequences of words, how social media can impact others, and, most importantly, you know, to be very, very careful with technology. And that's pretty much all I have for this evening. It's nice to see we have a crowd. Usually, our meetings are very, very quiet. So, with that, let's move on to the Superintendent's Report.
All right. Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, and welcome. Welcome to everyone who's here tonight. It is nice to have public participation and attendance at our meetings. So, we have some special guests. Some students are going to be speaking to us. And I look forward to hearing what they have to say. And I echo Mrs. Patrick's words about February also. I'm ready for some good, positive things to go on. So, I'm going to start by sharing some good things that are going on in the district. I'd like to extend congratulations to our National Merit finalist. All of these students were previously recognized as National Merit semifinalists, and they've all moved on in that process. We had two students at Olentangy, and three at Liberty, and two at Orange. So, congratulations to those students and their families. It's a tremendous accomplishment. We also had a few -- 19 students earn awards at the Delaware County High School Juryed Art Exhibit on January 28th. Items were on display from January 28th through February 22nd. OHS's Sidney Perry was awarded the Best in Show. So, congratulations to Sidney and all those other students who received honors. Recently, the state of Ohio started recognizing schools with a Purple Star Award designation for being military-friendly schools. And previously, Liberty Middle was one of the first eight schools in the state to be recognized with that distinction. In the latest round, we had three additional schools, Hyatt's Shanahan and Olentangy High School, be recognized as military-friendly schools. So, we have 21 more to go. Looking forward to that designation. Obviously, you all know that's near and dear to my heart, having two soon-to-be-three children in the military. We recently donated another $11,765 to the American Red Cross. Those were from the students who participated in the raising-for-relief raffle. And then, we obviously remember, we selected three students to be superintendent for a day. And that was just, honestly, that was probably so, I would say, the best day I had all year, spending that time with those three students. So, again, thank you to the community for all the hard work on that project. One discussion item on the agenda. Jen Iceman is going to be here with a team of people to talk about where we are with our school safety and security preparedness, and begin our discussion about, you know, again, all the things that we're doing and looking at opportunities to continue to improve in this area. And then, just two agenda items of note that are a big purchase, is some additional vehicles for our maintenance fleet. One of those vehicles is a replacement, and there are two additional vehicles to cover all the maintenance that's going on throughout the district. And then, there's an easement for right-of-way on our Tyler Run property for AEP. That's to complete the project, the roundabout at Liberty Road in Jewett. That'll be happening this summer. So, good luck getting around that area. So, just a couple, as always, to finish with some important dates coming up. This Saturday, if you haven't already, anybody in the community, we have our Olentangy Education Foundation Spirit of Community Night. It's a great night, hosted at Shops at Worthington Place, starting at 7:30. I think it's $20? $20? $25? Tickets, $25 now? $20 pre-sale. Now, it's $25 at the door. But it's a fun night. I encourage, I highly encourage everybody to attend. On Monday, March 5th, we'll be hosting, our school advocacy committee will be hosting a candidates forum. So, all of the local candidates running for House Representatives, State Senate will be in attendance to discuss their agendas with our school advocacy committee. And hopefully, they'll be bringing a good, strong message about school funding. Knowing there's one here. I'll give them a little che-cheat. And then, our next Board of Education Business Session is March 15th here in the Berlin Room. So, with that, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hatfield, the Treasurer's Report.
Absolutely. So, just a quick update on a couple of the projects that the Treasurer's Office is currently working on. We are undergoing our budgeting process, which leads to the preparation of the May forecast. So, we're gathering that information and reviewing that at this time. We are also in preparation for the refunding of the BABS bonds that we presented at the last board meeting and approved the resolution to do so. I wanted to come back and give you additional information about the maturity of those bonds. With the refunding, the maturity date will not change. They are still at a 2038, at the maximum end of the maturity dates, and that is not different than the original issuance. So, I wanted to clarify that for public record. And also, let you know that we are continuing to watch the market. We're still predicting a 3% to 3.5% savings in addition to mitigating the risk of losing our subsidy payments. So, we'll continue to monitor that rate and have more information as we get closer to the actual bond-calling portion of that process. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Hatfield, do we have any public participation for general comments?
Yes, we do this evening. We have eight individuals who have given us information for that. To start that process, I would like to read through the individual rules or surrounding participation that we like to have with that. Just to let everybody know that the public participation is established by those filling out the forms that we had at the front door. Individuals are allowed five minutes to make their statements with a maximum total participation of 30 minutes. We can choose to extend that time at the end of the 30 minutes if so desired. Speakers will be recognized by the Board President and must state his or her name and their address for the record, please. Individual problems will not be handled at the board meeting, but we do recommend that follow-up appointments can be made with the board and/or superintendent at the conclusion if necessary.
Okay, so who do we have first?
So, at first, we have Olivia Ball, please.
Hi, Olivia.
Good evening.
Hi. Make sure you state your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Olivia Ball. I live at 379 Rosewood Court, Powell, Ohio, 43065.
Thank you.
Ready? Yep, go right ahead.
Members of the school board, my name is Olivia Ball. I am a senior at Olentangy Liberty High School. I stand before you today to address the racism present at Olentangy Local School District. Although schools were created to educate the population, today they are safe houses for victims of child hunger, children abused in their homes, and others who may have a difficult home life. In our district, Olentangy schools are no longer a safe house for people of color, specifically black students. It seems every day, black students like myself are subjected to the ignorance of white students and their bigotry of people of color. I am aware that the majority of Olentangy students do not have these views, but the few with these views have made the school environment unwelcoming and a difficult situation to face every day. There are select Olentangy students who view blacks as uneducated, poor, dirty, or even humans who are undeserving of equal rights. The First Amendment of our Constitution states, "Congress shall not prohibit the free exercise, therefore, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." Obscenity, meaning an extreme offensive word or expression, and threats, among other aspects of speech, are not protected by the First Amendment. During the school year of 2017 to 2018, there have been many examples of obscenity and threats which white students have posed against black people and our culture. These hateful words and actions are hurtful to black students and have made us feel unwelcome in our own hometown. We need to change the outlook students have on people of color. Tonight, you will hear from several students from Olentangy schools who have been subjected to the hateful words your students have thrown towards us. I ask you tonight, listen to our stories as if they were stories your children told you, as if your child came home telling you about their day filled with the hate Olentangy Schools has facilitated. Olentangy can still change their damaged reputation. You can make things right for all students hurt by the actions which are fueled by the racism in your community. Use this opportunity to make us feel safe in Olentangy schools. We deserve to feel safe in schools just like the majority of white students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Hatfield, who do we have next?
Next, we have Mia LaPointe, please.
Mia? Hi, Mia. Hi. Welcome. State your name and address, please, hon.
My name is Mia LaPointe. I live at 9220 Worthington Road, Apartment 129, Westerville, Ohio, 43082.
Thank you. Thank you. And what school do you attend, Mia?
I attend Orange. Yes.
Go ahead.
Dear Olentangy School Board, my name is Mia LaPointe, and I am a junior at Olentangy Orange High School. It is my first year at Olentangy Orange, and yet I have already had many experiences with the administration picking and choosing which parts of the Olentangy policies to adhere to and which to ignore. Orange is very proud of the fact that we have the highest diversity in the district at 14%. However, this is all that can be claimed, that we have the highest diversity. So what? It would seem that all Orange cares about is what looks good on paper in black and white, while the students whose suggestions and complaints are being ignored or dismissed are real-life students of color. You might think that something negatively impacting a minority of the students is a small problem, but this is not a small problem. The Olentangy mission statement states, "Our mission is to facilitate maximum learning for every student." What I interpret that to mean is that if just one student is hindered from maximum learning, then there is a big problem. I am lucky to have not been one of the many who hear demeaning words spoken to or about me that make me dread to go to school every day. The biggest example that has happened to me was when Orange students were preparing for the Black History Month Assembly. It started when we were notified that we would only have 45 minutes instead of the usual hour. So, we went with it, and we worked very hard, writing the script and choreographing the dance for a month. Then, two weeks before the assembly, we were told that our attempt to maximally educate the student body on historical occasions pivotal to the black community would, quote-unquote, "make students feel uncomfortable." What about me? What about every student of color attending Orange? When can we not feel uncomfortable? Yet, when the psychological and verbal abuse has been communicated to the school administration, and still nothing happens, yet when the school administration is the entity behind said psychological abuse, the problem goes from big to substantial. It's enough to make people wonder. It's enough to make me wonder. Does the Olentangy School District really care about their students? This is why I implore the Olentangy School Board to stiffen its policies on vocal and psychological abuse and change it to specify abuse against people of color. I request that the school board attempt to go over and beyond what is required of them by law to extinguish discrimination in what should be our home of learning. Please, I beg of you, change the lives of each and every student of color in the Olentangy Local School District. Thank you.
We have Chioma Wome. Please excuse me if I mispronounced your last name. I apologize.
Welcome.
Hi.
Go ahead and state your name and address, hon.
My name is Chioma Wome. I live at 5589 Piermont Court, Westerville, Ohio, 43082.
Okay, go ahead, hon.
Hello, my name is Chioma Wome. I'm a sophomore at Orange High School. Last Friday, February 23rd, I went to Westerville South's Black History Month Show, and they were allotted two hours for their show. Two hours. Meanwhile, at Orange, our principal allotted one period for our show, which ended up being 35 minutes. I can only speak on behalf of Orange, but I'm also aware that Liberty does not even have a Black History Month Show. Orange and Olentangy have also only had a show for the past few years. Although Westerville City School District and Olentangy Local School District are not the same district, they share the commonality of being run by the state of Ohio. I went to Westerville City Schools for six years before I moved to OLSD, and I can proudly say that I never felt that I was not wanted as a black person. This was not because Westerville has more black people than OLSD, but because Westerville allows their students to showcase their culture and does not heavily restrict it. After my first day of school as a freshman at Orange, I went home and told my mom I wanted to go back to Westerville. My mom told me to just hang on and that it would get better, but it has not gotten better. I still feel like an outsider in my own school. OLSD is extremely proud to say that they are one of the best districts in the state when it comes to education and test scores, but when it comes to making every student feel included and heard, they're a lagging behind districts such as Westerville City Schools. Last school year, Black Empowerment Club asked one of our former vice principals and now our current principal if they could have more time for their show. He rejected their quest, request, because he didn't want to take too much time out of the school day. This year, Black Empowerment Club was ready to perform their show for Black History Month, but our principal told them that they could not talk about Colin Kaepernick, even if they did not mention his name. He also told them that they could not do the Black Power Fist. Colin Kaepernick is a modern example of a leader, but because our principal at Orange feels uncomfortable by the topic of kneeling during the National Anthem, which, by the way, is not against any law or even the flag code of the U.S., he censored it from the show and postponed it by two weeks so that they could redesign it to his liking. He would rather the majority of our school not feel offended than allow them to showcase something that is a growing part of being black in America. I have talked to multiple black people at Orange on why they wish to not participate in the show. One, who will remain anonymous, said that he would participate in the show, but that last year, those who did were called the N-word, and he does not want that hate. Personally, I do not want to participate in a show during our month that is censored by administration. It should not be up to administration to decide how black people showcase our culture during Black History Month. I want to be able to bring my culture to the table as a Nigerian and combine it with African-American culture and show that we all come from the same place. I do not want to be restricted on how I showcase and celebrate being black during the one month out of the year that people may actually listen. In a predominantly white district, and more specifically, a school that is only 8% black, it is very easy for us black people to not be heard. Slavery, racism, and like subjects should not be avoided topics, but OLSD has conveniently made it so that they are somewhat taboo. Even in APUS history, where we fully divulge into every topic, we do not spend as much time on black history as I think we should. Although I know that there are standards made by the federal government that OLSD is subjected to follow, it amazes me how we can spend weeks on how Europeans went on around the world, imperializing and colonizing the world, but we brush upon important topics in black history. Orange teaches the minimum amount of black history required by the federal government. Instead of the show talking about modern issues and accomplishments of the black community and relating it to our history, the members of Black Empowerment Club were restricted so much that they could only talk about our past. I do not want these topics to be uncomfortable to talk about, and censoring the show that us black people put on to celebrate our history because our history books do not teach it to us is only deepening this issue. Why is it that we can have an hour-long pep rally three times a year, but a Black History Month Show is not even allowed to be one hour? How can we celebrate our history if you will not properly allow us to do so? Thank you.
Thank you, Chioma. Who do we have next?
Next, we have Jade Davis, please.
Hi.
Hi, Jade.
Hi.
Go ahead and state your name and address.
Jade Davis, 822 Bovie Lane, Powell, Ohio. Think about this, a student sitting in the back of the classroom, listening to the teacher explain the circumference of a circle. The student is scribbling down their notes as they try their best to pay attention, which isn't too hard because the sound of the classroom is so silent that you can hear a pen drop. The doors open, and there is no other teacher sitting next to, there's another teacher sitting next to the student who is just doing their work as well. As there is a silent pause in the classroom, you can hear a swift wind blow like someone is running. All of a sudden, you hear, "Nigger." The teacher sitting next to the student laughs. As they get up and close the door, all the student can hear is that, "Nigger, nigger, nigger." That's all they think of you, and that's all they ever will. They take a moment to contain themselves, breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out. It's not working. They feel the tears flowing. They're going to come any second now. They know that they have to be strong because they're the only person who looks like them. They have to make a good representation in this kind of environment. They keep thinking, "It's okay, it's okay," when in reality, they know that going to school just to simply get an education is much more difficult than others make it out to be. They think every morning, "Is it really worth it?" The student respectfully gets up and asks the teacher sitting next to them if they can go to the restroom. The teacher says, "Don't say anything to them, please don't." They just stare at them and ask, "Can I please just go to the restroom?" They know that their voice is shaking, and every other student in the classroom is staring at them. They walk out and make their way to the restroom, close the stall door, and that's when the floodgates open up. They don't know why, but they are crying uncontrollably, and it won't stop, trying to stay quiet so no one else will hear them. Imagine that this is your child, going to school to learn, yet they come home and tell you that they just can't do this anymore. What do you do as a parent? How do you feel that your child is being treated this way? Think about that. Well, this child is me. Imagine how my parents feel. Me and my fellow black students are sick and tired of being sick and tired. What we are facing in your school district is not a problem of diversity and inclusion, it's an issue of racism. It is not a matter of people feeling, quote-unquote, "uncomfortable." It is a matter of your students being scared to go to school. It is a matter of your students not being advocated for by its administration. And it's a matter of your students feeling like they cannot achieve maximum learning because of the harassment being faced onto us every day at each of the Olentangy schools. I personally go to Liberty High School, and the seven out of nine months this school year, I've been called "nigger," "ape," "tar," and phrases have been said to me like, "Donald Trump needs to send you back to Africa." "Who let the monkey out of its cage?" And even things like, "Who let this nigger in here?" Having to walk into a restroom, and the wall had written on it, "Death to all the niggers and the nigger lovers." This is what is going on in your school district. This used to be our school district. This used to be my school district. Every day, I have to drive by a Confederate flag flying high and proud nearby my home. The student that lives there attends Liberty. Now, by any means, you cannot change people's minds, but what you can do is change your policy. What you can do is make your students feel safe. And what you should do is achieve your mission to maximum learning for every student. Thank you.
Jade. Michael Carter, please. Hi, Michael.
Hi, Michael.
Hello. Can you hear me? Michael Carter, senior at Olentangy High School, 2042 Parkland Drive, Lewis Center, Ohio, 43035. Good evening, Superintendent Rafe, Board President Miss Patrick, and all other board members attendance tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to briefly address the board. I am, like I said, a senior at Olentangy High School and have addressed you in the past regarding poetry out loud. But today, my comments address a more painful issue. My comments address the need to change and enforce policy that addresses casual and direct use of the N-word and students' harassment in the school. At Olentangy High School, Mr. Griffiths and Dean of Students, Mr. Henry, have listened and taken proactive steps to address concerns. I stand before you to ask that you review the student handbook and policies that make change, that students who engage in harassing behaviors will be suspended instead of may be suspended. I would like to find a way that students, administrators, teachers, parents, and the board can work together to make Olentangy School District a best practice for the state and, better yet, for the nation. That is very important because we are opening the doors of our fourth high school That is very important because we are opening the doors of our fourth high school in a few months and maybe a couple more down the road for years. It is imperative that as a district, neighbors, and community residents, we begin to build on our commonalities. Every day, I wake up and I pray that I make it home at night. I pray for my mother and my grandmother sitting right there that one day will not have to worry about me being pulled over by a police officer and treated unfairly and may not make it home. Every day, as a black man, I wake up and enter a war zone around me. My battle every day I face is to show that I do not fit into any bias or stereotype that is put in place in a closed-minded person's head. Exactly around this date last year, at 11:55 PM at a steak-and-stake restaurant, a police officer demanded me to walk to the front of the restaurant with him. As we go into to the front of the restaurant, he pinned me up against the wall and said, "I know you have drugs on you," and forced me to put my hands up, and he patted me down. Didn't find any drugs. He looked me in the eyes if he was disappointed. He looked me in the eye and said, "Well, I know you have alcohol in your car." I said, "No, sir, I did not." He said, "Well," cut me off there and said, "Well, let's go to your car." I said, "Okay." So as we walked to the car, I was observing him and how he walked. I saw that he had his hand right here, right next to his gun holster the whole time. And he did not find any alcohol in my vehicle. My home and school are the only places I want felt safe, but I'm here today to tell you that now I do not feel safe in my own school. I turn the corner every period, I hear jokes about black hair, black women, black athletes, black celebrities, and black politicians. I hear this so often throughout my day that I almost come to a place where I felt numb and these issues that they didn't faze me. But truthfully, deep down in my soul, they do, because I was taught I should never be ashamed of who I am. So I saw a walk proud and a stand strong because that's who I was raised to be, thanks to that lady sitting right there. There is one word that is loosely tossed around every day, and that is the N-word. Three weeks ago, a kid in my math group chat openly used the N-word, and a couple classmates and I went to approach the kid, asking, just to simply ask him why he felt the need to say this and to educate on why he shouldn't. As we were doing so, the kid looked as if he was nervous and the police officer was motioned to us to calm us down, as if we were acting in a violent manner. So, many times in this group chat, this has occurred, and I've had to keep my mouth shut because people I feel are ignorant. But time and time again, I have to keep my mouth shut, but I come to you today because I cannot, and I will not keep my mouth shut any longer. So I ask you all today to change the policies in the handbook and put in place a stern punishment for any racial slurs, any jokes that has kept people enslaved for generations, for I feel exile in my own country. I don't want the generations to graduate from this school district to feel exile in their own schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Zeon. Hi, Zeon. State your name and address, please.
Uh, Zeon Sears, 3132 ZOE Court, Galena, Ohio, 43021.
Thank you, Zeon.
Alright. The central issue with all these stories is we, as black students, as students of color, feel like our voices don't matter. To even speak to you, to even be here, was made, in my opinion, more difficult than it needed to be. Our complaints fall on deaf ears, and we feel that our peers, and in some cases, the administration, are allowed to verbally assail and devalue us simply because of the brown color of my skin. Do not think this problem we speak about only affects your black students. I respectfully ask you not to just consider our problems and our stories, but consider what stories your Indian students have to tell, your Hispanic students, your Asian students. They are not here speaking today, but we are here today speaking for them. For all of us, this cannot be allowed to continue. Nothing is changing. The aggression is not stopping, and our voices are still not heard. Your students go to school every day expecting racial aggression. We are not simply black students or white students, Latino students, but your students. And at least a small part, your policy allows this. In the Olentangy 2017 to 2018 handbook, it states, "The Olentangy Local School District is committed to having an environment free from all discrimination, including harassment, intimidation, or bullying on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, disability, age, religion, ancestry, or genetic information. The district prohibits harassment, intimidation, or bullying on or in the school environment, including all academic, extracurricular, and school-sponsored activities. A student who violates this prohibition will be subject to the potential penalties set forth in the discipline section of this handbook. These potential penalties range from a simple detention to an expulsion. And I confidently say in front of you today that this prohibition on discrimination is not effective. I implore you, I ask you to make a change. We can actually see, a change we can actually prove. Change your words into language that is powerful, language that is meaningful, language that will prove your commitment to me, to us. Change the language in this section to mandate a harsher punishment for any and all discriminatory behavior, taking the decision out of the hands of the individual school administrators who might handle the situation disproportionately or incorrectly. When a student commits an aggression against me, or Michael, or Jade, or Chioma, or any student of color, and they are barely punished, that shows me that you, and you, and you, and you, and you, and you do not care. Show me. Show us and show them. Show everyone that you do. Please. Become the model that others will follow in this state and in this country. Become the example and the model for excellence, the excellence that you claim to always achieve. It is time to stop ignoring the culture of microaggressions and racism, plain racism, disguised as youthful ignorance on the hands of your students and old ignorance disguised as ignorance from the hands of your administrators. Show me you stand behind your students of color. Show me you will stand for us and fight for us and protect us from the hostile environment that my school and his school and her school has become. I thank you for your time, I really do, for your respect in listening to me today. I understand that to speak here is a privilege, and we all look forward to working with you, to standing with you on how we can protect all Olentangy students. Thank you.
Mrs. Patrick, we are almost out of our 30-minute allotment, but we have two other speakers. Would you like to move forward with allowing these other speakers?
Yeah, oh yes, yeah. Thank you. Um, we have Jason Gerard, please.
Hi, Jason.
Good evening. Uh, Jason Gerard, 5544 Luddington Drive, Lewis Center, Ohio. Um, so the topic I wanted to just briefly talk on are additional school security ideas. Uh, I want to put the board at ease upfront. Similar to the other speakers tonight, these are meant to be positive and constructive comments. Um, I've also got copies that I'd like to leave with the board if that's okay, so you can kind of think through the ideas that I propose. Also upfront, I'd like to thank the board, our teachers, administrators, and school resource officers for everything you do for our school district. Uh, you have a tremendous responsibility, and I hope you know how much support you have within this community. A few years ago, after the shooting at Sandy Hook Elementary, I reached out to a friend of mine, Randy Wright, Chief Administrative Services Officer for the district. Uh, over a cup of coffee, I shared my concerns about the growing acts of violence in schools. Uh, Randy shared the seriousness in which the school district takes these matters, and also that there were many things in place within our district, both seen and unseen. Um, after recent months, this past, after recent events this past month, many of us feel compelled to become even more involved. There are many very complex aspects to this problem. They will continue to be debated, uh, and hopefully some positive change will occur from the debates. Uh, but I'm here tonight because I think there are additional steps that we can take as a local community uh, to ensure something like this doesn't happen in our district. Uh, so the idea is really all centered around the main objective of keeping our buildings secure. Uh, children need to know for certain that there aren't weapons in our buildings, nor are they going to be brought into the buildings. I'd like to quickly run through four additional steps we could take. Uh, first, uh, reduce the number of available entry points into our buildings and improve the security of the available entryways. This is really blocking off, you know, how many entryways, especially in the morning and the evening, that we allow to be available. Within the approved entryways, I think we could put turnstiles or pass-through devices uh, that makes it so, you know, each child kind of has to badge in. A lot of corporations do this. Uh, a local bank that I work in, big center here, uh, locally, took these measures that created turnstiles, uh, and it really added to the feeling of security, uh, but it also actually improved security. So we knew who was coming in and out. Um, it also enables lockdowns to be a little bit more simple. So again, reduce the number of entries and have turnstiles on the ones that we approve. Um, second, add additional cameras around the perimeter of the buildings, network to a control center, actively monitored where doors could be locked to ensure a threat doesn't gain access. Um, so just again, cameras outside, actively monitored, the ability to do a quick lockdown. Uh, third is add additional security staff at each building. Uh, it's my understanding today that we have five school resource officers covering 23 buildings. I also understand they can call on local law enforcement at a time of crisis. I think we need to increase the sheer numbers to ensure no one gains unwanted entry to our buildings. The goal is to eliminate the crisis before it begins. Uh, and then fourth, and this one I'm just advocating that we study, uh, would be metal detectors within the approved entryways. Um, it should be tested to see if we can do this, you know, with the technology available. We don't want to make our schools into prisons, so we want it to be, you know, very, uh, kind of easy, welcoming, uh, doesn't place an undue restriction on staff, but I do think it's something we should look at it, look at. Um, if we act swiftly, deliberately, these four things could be in place when the 2018-2019 school year begins. Uh, I'd like to freely offer my personal time and commitment, uh, to the board in any way possible, uh, to help these things come into place. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael McCann, please.
Good evening. Good evening. State your name and address.
Alright, thank you for your time. My name is Mike McCann. Uh, my address is 4997 St. Metten Drive. Thank you first and foremost for the work that you do for, uh, our kids and our education. I'd just like to make a couple of comments tonight on, uh, school safety with everything going on right now. Uh, I just want to really make sure that we're doing all we can to keep our kids safe. I'm sure that everyone in this room has strong opinions on the issue of gun control. That's something that I'm not here to discuss or try to solve for. However, our Olentangy Schools community does have the ability and resources at our disposal to ensure that our most treasured resources, our children, are securely protected. In my mind, to build off of the comments that just happened on the four proposals he shared, I go to two ways we can quickly do this while we look for other alternatives. The first would be, we should strongly consider providing protection by staff that have their concealed carry permits. My mom was a teacher, and I also know in getting to talk with some of your current administrators that they love our kids and would do anything in their power to protect them. You currently have Olentangy teachers and administrators that have gone and got their concealed carry permit and want that fighting chance, who love their kid, love our kids and want to defend them, we just simply need to give them the permission to do so. The second is beefing up the protection by armed police officers. Armed security is a way of life, and we see that in every aspect of our lives. We see armed security at airports. We know that there's armed security in airplanes now. We see armed security at banks, at jewelry stores, at companies, and at government offices and sporting events. It's great to even see we have security here tonight. And here, I feel really secure. Why do I get better security going to a baseball game or a government office than my kids do sitting in a classroom? Why, after all of the repeated mass tragedies in schools, do we as a society continue to leave our schools as a soft target and under-protected rather than a hardened target? The best news is, is that this is a problem that all of us here have the ability to solve. I would kindly ask that the board move to immediately allow teachers, administrators, and staff that have gone through the necessary background checks and have their concealed carry permit to be able to carry in the schools. I would also kindly ask that the board put in place a budget item to provide the necessary armed security that our kids deserve. I believe that there, that each school should have at least one police officer per 100 students stationed in key areas throughout the school as a further deterrent to prevent a tragedy. Continuing to leave our schools vulnerable to the threats of today's society, in my mind, is the definition of insanity. And together, I know that we can solve this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public participation?
No, we do not.
Okay. I would like to thank everybody for their comments, and, um, this is very helpful to us to move forward. Next, we have a discussion item from our, uh, it would be from, please welcome Jen Iceman, regarding school safety and security preparedness.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about district safety and security and preparedness. Um, we continue to prioritize student-staff and and building, uh, safety and security. Oh, thank you. We do have a close partnership, as you can see tonight, with the Delaware County Sheriff's Office um, to increase the security in our buildings, and and we continue to work with them on a daily basis to make sure that we have the, as secure a building as we can possibly have. Um, we also work regularly with the staff and the community to improve our safety and security. I want to talk a little bit about some of the things that we do in the district and have done in the district and continue to do in the district to prioritize our safety and security. Um, we continue to to utilize Alice. Um, this year, we trained 153 teachers, administrators, bus drivers, and new classified staff in the Alice techniques. Um, I know that several of you have been to some of our our Alice trainings. Um, I invite the rest of you, if you're interested in coming, uh, to to go to those trainings. We will be having another one probably next month to train some of the new staff that we've hired throughout the school year. Um, during the summers, we also do Alice training for ESC employees, um, which are substitute teacher employees, so that they are also trained when they come into the buildings in, uh, in safety and security. We, we did receive a grant from the state of Ohio approximately two years ago, and we did install Marx radios, which are essentially radios that that, uh, go directly to the sheriff's department and the 911 operators. Um, that would get, uh, security personnel in the sheriff's department to us much quicker than having to use a panic button or even to call 911. We do continually do safety drills. We do a minimum of three safety drills per year with our students. Um, we also separate out our staff and we do a tabletop drill, and I'll talk to you a little bit about what that looks like in a minute. Um, we also have a safety plan. We continually monitor our safety plan. We change our safety plan as it, as needed. Um, you know, as things come up or as we see new things or laws change, or, you know, we can add these things because it's been allowed in fire code. Um, we include those things in our safety plan, so we regularly change that plan. That is updated through, um, to the Ohio Department of Education, and our plan has been approved um, and reviewed by the Office of Homeland Security. Um, we continue to update and, uh, and improve our security cameras. We did have, we are in year two of our three-year plan to increase and improve our security cameras in our buildings. Um, each year during the three-year plan, we're either increasing or improving 15 cameras in the high schools, 10 cameras in the middle schools, and five in the elementary schools. Um, with that grant that we got from the Ohio Department of Education several years ago, that, um, we were also able to update, um, and and give our secretaries the ability to view multiple cameras from throughout the building. So we do have someone that is in the building that is able to kind of see what's going on in in multiple entrances in the building. Um, we've updated our PA system. Um, classroom, individual classrooms now are able to utilize our PA system, so i- in a large high school, if someone in in one wing of the building sees something or hears something, they can announce that to the ref. they can announce that to the rest of the building. That's been a change within the past couple of years. Our volunteer background check program has evolved. This year, we really delved into it. We developed a standardized volunteer training program. It includes a video. It includes our policies, a review of our policies, a background check, and the volunteer has to sign off that they have reviewed and they've watched the video and they've reviewed those policies. We continue to drug screen our new employees and coaches. And I want to tell you a little bit about our tabletop drills. We utilize the tabletop drills with just our staff. The staff tests and practices our safety plan, so we, every year we pick a different scenario, and we take whatever piece of that scenario and we utilize our safety plan to make sure that the safety plan works. You know, we talked about our live safety plan earlier. In those tabletop drills, we'll say, well, that doesn't really work in my building. And so we can, we can change that safety plan so that it's, what's in there is actually functional for that building. We also have our Stay Safe, our Bullying Reporting Hotline. That was moved on to the MyOLSD page this year of all the students. We did put up posters, there's stickers around the buildings that say that we have this ad, this icon. The report, anybody can make a report on this. It can be anonymous, or someone can utilize their name. They can utilize the phone. They can make those reports online. We do have it on the front of our webpage, and we have it on each individual building webpage as well. The reports that are made on this are monitored 24/7. We do have a priority list. If there's something that, that the people that are monitoring see, they will call a specific list of people here in Olentangy.
Should we change that order? Because right now, I'm first, so at 11 o'clock on Saturday night when they call me.
That's up to you.
I prefer they call randomly.
I just updated it today, so you are still at the top of the list.
I always, I'm like sleeper, it's all right.
We also, back in the summer of 2016, we instituted our Community Safety Committee meeting. It was our initial meeting. In that committee, we've got our SROs, several of who are here tonight. We've got community members, we've got safety professionals, we've got the Director of the EMA, we've got an FBI agent, we've got some really impressive people that are on that committee. And we do have meetings every quarter. Really, our goal is to review our policies and our procedures, to make plans, to make recommendations on security and preparedness for the district. Some recent topics that we've talked about over this past year are, of course, building security. We've talked about door locking devices, we've talked about front-entry security, our safety plan. We do have, back in 2013, we did have, one of the gentlemen on our, our Safety Committee owns a security company, and he did provide us with a master plan for safety and security. He went through all of our buildings, and we do have a master plan. We utilize that plan to make a strategy every year on kind of what we want to work on. We focus our efforts on hazard preparedness, prevention, which I think is really, really important, preventing something from happening, mitigation, protection, and then response and recovery if something does happen. We talk about best practices. What training can we provide to our staff, to our students, to our parents in the district? Do we look at new technology, new equipment? Are there things that are out there now that we could utilize in our buildings that would make them safer? And we look at our policies and our procedures and our safety plan. One thing that we worked on this year as well, really with the lead of Lee Foster, who's on our Safety Committee, did a really terrific job in helping us pull this together, is if you look on our website, we do have a safety and preparedness site. If you go to the Parents tab under Safety and Preparedness, we did launch this in the fall of 2017, and we do update this as changes are made or we see new things that need to happen. I'll show you a little bit about what you can find on the website. It's got contact information for our school resource officers, for the law enforcement agencies that are around in this area. We also talk about our emergency procedures as far as active shooter and Alice, but we even go into storms, you know, snow, weather. We've got information about all of that in there. We've got tips for parents and for students regarding safety and security. We talk about transportation safety, you know, what do parents need to know, you know, about transportation and buses, and where do their kids need to stand? That information can be found on there. We also have our visitor procedures, you know, what do visitors need to look for when you're, when you're coming in a building? Do you need to stop at the office? This is why we have all of the doors locked. Those are also things you can find. We talk about prevention and awareness, cyber safety, bullying. We do have the links to the bullying harassment on there as well, and we've got parent information in the event that there is a district-wide emergency. Some of our recommendations, we've got, we've got lots. I just put a couple on the top here. The Safety Committee does feel that the district needs the addition of a position, several positions, specifically a specific Director of Safety and Security for the school district, and potentially an additional safety specialist or two, someone who handles safety and security 24/7, all the time for the district. That would need to be an additional position that we would add. We also have looked significantly into door locking devices. I know that you see them a lot sometimes on Facebook, or they, you know, they float out there. Door locking devices, we think we found two that really would work for our district. You know, there are ways that we can get into the room, they're unassuming, they're easy to install, and we think they work really, really well. So we do have numbers and devices, and that would need to be added to the budget, we think. We also think visitor management software is really, really important. I know that we lock the doors, and I know that the secretaries ask a specific set of questions before they let someone into a building, but the way that our buildings are set up, we have a little bit of a gap between the doors and the offices, so we think that we need some visitor management software to assist the secretaries and make sure that the people that are coming in the building during the day really should be in there. And I want to introduce you to our school resource officers that we have here today. We have Deputy Mox. Hello. Sure, sure. And we have Deputy Rice, and they're going to say a few words about what their job is and what they do.
Hello, I'm Deputy Mox. I'm primarily Olentangy High School and Shanahan Middle School as well. I feel awkward. I feel like it was going to be a classroom. I thought I was going to be facing more everybody else, so I'm kind of turned around here. Just a little bit about us, we do have five resource officers in the Olentangy School District. Three of those are in each high school. There are two that split the middle schools, the four middle schools, the other four middle schools, because I have the one, so, and then the other elementaries in half from the east side and the west side. Also Deputy Martin actually covers Oasis and STEM Academy. We are going to be adding one additional SRO here for next year's school year, beginning for the Berlin High School. Mr. Spinner back there in the back is going to be leading that charge. Also, the Delaware County Sheriff's Office does have access to every single school building in the Olentangy School District. We have been given swipe cards that we use, that we personally have the same way, just the same way as the staff. They are placed strategically in our cruisers, so each of our deputies do know where they are to locate them, if in case an emergency has hap, does happen, and they are able to get into the buildings as quickly as possible without having to either break down the door or some sort of like that. They have access on the doors to be able to swipe the keys and get in and whatnot. Extensive SRO training. We have been through multiple purposes of training, especially to come into the schools. Some of the primary stuff that we're going to talk about is a little bit is the primary, we used to do the quad training back in the day, which was when if an active threat or some type of intruder were to come into a school or a building, it was multi, they basically would wait for four officers or deputies to arrive on scene, and then they would go in. Well, obviously, we've seen that, that that's not that great of a response. They've actually changed that years ago. We are trained now, as soon as the threat is, happens, and we are made aware of it, we are to directly make contact with that threat and to neutralize the threat until everybody is safe in that system. Multiple other trainings, kind of deescalating situations, especially me, I'm actually a courageous negotiator here for our county. Yeah, you believe that, Mr. Rafe? So yeah, that's basically some of the beginning stuff that we have for us. Deputy Rice?
Okay. And I'm Deputy Rice, and I actually take care of nine different schools. I'm in the middle schools and the elementaries in the district, so I have a little bit, I have to spread my resources a little bit more than the high schoolers, the high school guys. But we still do provide a lot of different resources to the schools. We monitor what's going on in the schools as we are walking through the hallways, or I join kids at recess where we have a closer, maybe one-on-one with the children. I may, we sit in the cafeterias at times to monitor what's going on in the cafeterias to help provide better interaction with the children there, and to provide them safety measures if they need to come talk to us. We also take our time. We may have issues within getting the buses out onto the roadways, in which we may have to help the buses out onto the roadways so they're, so it's a little bit safer to get the kids out of the driveways. Mox at times helps the kids cross the street to get over from their parking lots safely over to the high school in the mornings. We also-
Just when our safety, our traffic guy's not there, like he hasn't been there the last couple of days, so.
And it's been wet ones, so how'd you survive? We also have to deal with, you know, any type of criminal situations that may arise in the schools. We are, you know, dedicated to take, take time and speak with the students there if there's issues with fighting or anything else that may come about. We also provide the Alice drills, and we actively are there during the Alice drills when the children are doing the Alice drills. So while they're actively doing their Alice drills, we're walking around so we can give tips to the teachers if we see something that's not quite right, or we think that the teachers can do it a little bit better. We provide them with that information so we can only better the results if something were to happen.
Does everybody know what Alice actually stands for? No? Okay. Alice is, it's an acronym, it's Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. And it's just types of steps that we go over, and actually, all the, and actually multiple other people that, through the Sheriff's Office, I actually trained, we go through a week-long training to actually be able to train. We are the teachers, to teach, the teachers and the students of this lockdown procedures and evacuation procedures and things like that, and barricade. So we are taught and heavily trained in that as well to actually teach and inform the staff and the students of that as well.
Okay. And we also will provide different safety classes. I do probably a lot in the elementaries and the middle schools, any kind of safeties. We run from personal safeties, such as internet and the bullying, to self-esteem, to bike, water, stranger, anything that you can think of or anything the teacher requests of us, we do lessons on. So we do a lot of interaction that way with the kids as well, and to provide them any kind of safety information that they may need. We also have direct relationships with them in providing them safety as they would go home in the evenings. So at times, we may have to talk to them with the counselors and provide them things and resources through Children's Services or through court services, depending on why we're talking to that student. So we try to direct them in the right, the direction there to provide them the full safety that they need. Do you have anything else to add, Deputy Mox?
I don't have anything else. Do you have anything you want to say?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I'd like to invite Alicia Behrens up. She's going to talk a little bit about social and emotional supports that we have instituted here at Olentangy.
Good evening. Get closer. I'm Alicia Behrens. I'm the supervisor of student well-being. My position was created last year in order to help address the non-academic barriers of students. So, thank you. Things that are getting in the way of the students' learning that aren't necessarily related to a specific learning disability, I try to address and support and am slowly working in more programming and things like that. My background is in mental health. I'm a licensed mental health counselor, and so I am coming at it from maybe a clinical approach, so sometimes my thoughts are a little different than the educators, but that's all right. We're all working together to help support our students. So the purpose of my section of this presentation is to just give you a brief snapshot of some of the social and emotional supports we're putting in place to help address those needs of our students. I wanted to break it down into the prevention procedures that we have in place to help support those students, hopefully before they need that intervention, things that we're putting in place to help address, coping skills, social skills, how to avoid drugs and alcohol, how to build good friendships, all of those things, depending on the level, obviously. We're doing, some of the elementary schools and middle schools are doing the Too Good for Drug and Too Good for Violence programs, which is through the Delaware Drug Free Coalition. Before I started, Mr. Rafe had received a grant in order to promote the COPE program, which is a program that teaches the teachers how to teach, sorry, lots of teaching, cognitive behavioral therapy skills. So it gives them the ability to, not being a therapist themselves, but how to help the students understand how our thoughts control our feelings, control our behaviors, and if one of those things is not quite working the right way, so we're thinking these bad things about ourselves and that makes us feel bad, how can we put things in place to change the way we think that might affect the way we feel, so on and so forth. So we're doing that at the middle school level, and our sixth graders are participating in that, mostly in their Family Consumer Science six-week block that they were having a, kind of a free time before they moved on to the other six-week blocks. This year, we've started partnering with the Mental Health Board of Delaware County. I know it's a very long name, but that I'm not going to say all of the words to, but they're helping us provide two clinicians through Centero, which is a mental health agency that was previously in Franklin County, that's moved into Delaware County. So we do have two mental health clinicians, one's focusing on drug and alcohol issues, the other's focusing on general mental health, providing that, those prevention services to our students, they're going into classrooms, doing some teaching, they're running some groups for certain topics, anxiety, stress management, grief, different topics that all of our students are dealing with. We do have a drug and alcohol education prevention and mentor person. His name is James West. He's a social worker. We also have, obviously, our school counselors in the buildings. We have three social workers for the district. And then we also work very hard at level transition communication, so when a student moves from elementary school to middle school, middle school to high school, we try to make sure that we're communicating those social emotional needs to those teachers and to those administrators so that they're aware of what those students are needing in terms of supports or certain things, whether they're on a 504 or an IEP or not, because we have some students that aren't necessarily on 504s or IEPs but still need some of those social emotional supports. And then we also are talking intra-districtly, so if we have a student at, say, Olentangy High School, and one of our social workers finds out from another student they're worried about a student at Orange High School, they heard that their friend at Orange High School is cutting, then we have that communication back and forth to go check in on that student at Orange High School and see if they need more support, what's going on, are they already linked up with in-school supports, do they need outside supports, things like that. So those are some of our prevention programs that we have in place. There's many more at the building levels. Like I said, I'm just giving you a brief snapshot of kind of what we have going on right now. The next section, again, I want to talk just about intervention, so this is kind of when students start to have some issues or having more struggles, we might start seeing their grades are dropping, their attendance is starting to have some difficulty, they just seem to be struggling more. We're going to put more prevention services in place, or intervention, sorry. We're gonna put more prevention services in place, or intervention, sorry, services in place to address those and help get them back to the place where they're able to achieve at their best ability. Our school psychologists and our intervention specialists at the buildings are doing some intervention services, whether that be doing some one-on-one counseling or the intervention specialists are, again, helping teach some of those coping skills and social skills in their lessons with their IEP students. The school counselors kind of play the role, as well as the social workers, of doing some of the prevention on the front end and then the intervention on the back end, as well as the Centero clinician, clinicians. This year we've added some mental health counseling interns that are continuing to build up that mental health support in our schools and their caseloads have quickly filled up, so the need is clearly there. And then we continue to make linkage to community resources. So as much support as we want to provide in school, we also need, need to make sure that they're getting those community resources as well. So making sure that the families know how to access mental health resources out in the community, whether it be helpline or a mental health agency, things like that. And then we also have our T-SIP program, which is the Traumatic Experience Crisis Intervention Plan. Those are the plans that we have in place in the aftermath of a crisis. So when something happens, whether it be something small or something large, then we have a plan in place to determine how we need to support our students in response to that. So whether it be a teacher passes away or even an individual student's parent passes away, we have a plan in place to address that, all the way up to large events that happen in the community or even in the nation, that we can address that, how are we supporting our students? So what do we do if we have a kid who is in crisis? All of the buildings have a plan in place in order to talk about kids that have needs. It's called something different at different buildings. We have the Kids in Crisis Meetings, we have the IAT Meetings, the SDM Meetings. And each building has a process in which if a teacher has a concern about a student, they can bring it to that meeting and we can discuss it and figure out how we're going to address that student. And then if we have a particular student that is in an immediate crisis, whether they have come to us and said, "I'm having some not-so-great thoughts," or a friend comes to us and says, "We need, we need to look into this because my friend said that they want to hurt themselves." We immediately find out where that student is. We get that student in to Student Services. They meet with their school counselor or with the social worker or one of the other mental health specialists and we go through a thorough risk assessment and that includes questions to address suicidal and homicidal ideation. We go through a lethality screener to determine what their level of risk is and depending on that level of risk, we notify parents and give them our recommendations, whether it be just increase, they're at low risk, we think that we need increased supervision, we're going to provide these extra supports at school, here's some linkages to outside resources if you don't have that. Or if they're at high imminent risk, then we might consider taking, asking the parents if they would consider taking them to the hospital for further evaluation because we're concerned about their safety. From there, we conduct, we have safety plans for students if needed and we determine what the follow-up care is gonna be for that student if they're going to have weekly check-ins, sometimes daily check-ins with a school counselor or a social worker. And we try to support that student as much we can, as we can, to make sure that they're able to learn to the best, their ability outside of what we're doing.
And that's all we have for you tonight. We're happy to answer any questions that you might, might have.
I have a few, anybody have any questions?
I do. But go ahead.
Go ahead, Julie.
Well, I was going to ask, when is the next Security Committee meeting?
We actually had it scheduled during spring break and they've asked me to change it, so we don't know yet. Probably within the week or so after spring break, I would guess. I'm, I'm happy to notify you of when that is, if you'd like to come.
Well, I just, there's a couple of things that I was hoping would be addressed. One of them is, how many doors swing out in the classrooms? Like how many classrooms do we have where the doors open into the hallway as opposed to-
All, all doors, it's fire code. All doors will open out into the hallway.
So the, the couple of door locks that you're looking at, does it prevent that door from opening?
Yes.
Where kids could be safe within the classroom?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I, I know that there was a post on Facebook that, that somebody had said something about, you know, a simple solution like a, like a door stop and, and doors are required to open out, so something like that wouldn't work. So we would have to have an actual contraption that was designed for those types of doors.
It's also a building code issue. The building code, up until fairly recently, didn't even allow those because of the egress requirement. But they're coming around to, coming up with a system-
And, and we have, look, there are some that, that fire code will allow and building code will allow. There are some that they don't. The ones that, that we like and that we, we recommend are ones that fall under that. Yes.
And then I was wondering, this is more for Alicia, like how many mental health professional interns do we have in our district?
We currently have four. One started with us at the beginning of the school year. She was previously a school counselor and has taken a leave of sabbatical for a year to get her mental health license. And then we have three new students who started three weeks ago.
And do they go into all buildings or do we focus on middle school, high school?
So having to triage where the need is, we focus mostly on the high school and then as, as we can, they're in some of the middle schools and elementary schools as well.
Thank you. I just, I had no idea what the number was.
That's okay. That's new this year.
Julie, go ahead.
Um, this is for Jen. How often do we do Alice training? Did you say three times?
We do, in, in every building, we do three Alice drills per year.
Well, now I'm asking, is it enough?
Well, we do, we do a minimum of three. Sometimes we do more. It depends on kind of what, what the situation is. Sometimes we, a lot of times what I like to do is make sure we, we have an additional drill or two after the Christmas break because we have new students that, that often start at that point in time. So that's, and sometimes we'll, if we have a, a large influx of students, we'll, we'll add those additional students. I'm, I'm willing to do as many drills as anybody wants to do. We are required to do that many and we do that many.
And when you do them, do, do the students know today we're gonna train so that they're not texting their mom or dad saying, "Oh, my gosh"?
Absolutely.
You know, 'cause I can just see them. I mean, yeah, it'd be nice if you could do a surprise training to see if they can really follow through with the plan, but then I can also see them all texting mom and dad saying, "Oh, my gosh," you know? So how is that handled?
I can speak for that one a little bit. That's handled, when it is announced, all the teachers know that the drill is going to happen. Most of the schools, I, I actually, I can say pretty much all of the schools I know, send a message out to the parents that this is occurring. "Hey, we're having, we're, we're having a drill today," or "We had the drill today." So that is relayed to the parents. It is, we, it's on an announcement. I've made the announcements before in the schools, "Hey, we're currently going to conduct an Alice drill today," and we go from there. And then when it's over, we allow everybody to know that there's a conclusion to the drill, that it's over. So then anything after that, then we know is not part of the drill. And anything prior to us getting on the announcements is a making, and, and we make it for a specific time. We don't say, "Hey," it'll just be sometime today. We'll say, "Hey, it's gonna be at this time today." So everybody is ready and knows what's gonna happen that is in that school. And, you know, we have the, we have the talk, part of, part of the Alice drills is, one of the, one of the Alice drills that they do with the students is a talk with the students to explain them to, to them what exactly Alice is. And, and it, and it goes through, there's a script that the teachers read to the students and answer any questions. Did that answer your question?
And then even though I was involved in building so many buildings, who, being involved in the Facilities Committee and everything, I didn't realize how, and I don't wanna fear monger, but how unsecure the, the recess areas are until I went to my daughter's school in Las Vegas and they actually have a wrought iron fence around the entire acreage of the school district. Now, a wrought iron fence isn't gonna start, stop someone from shooting inside the fence, but once the kids are in the building, they lock that fence so no one can even walk onto the recess areas. And I didn't even realize, when I saw that locked gate at her building, I thought, "Oh, my God, the people at Olentangie would just, you know, just freak out if they had a locked fence around the recess area." But it's around the entire building, this wrought iron, you know, it's probably 10 to 12 feet. And so now I question, you know, do we need to do something for the recess areas?
And, and I'd be happy to bring that up at the Safety Committee meeting and, and discuss that. I, I can think of some red flags right off the bat, but I think it's certainly worth bringing-
And, and it's specifically, you know, to keep those people out who should not be in the, the school area.
My concern is, is what, what if somebody's in there? Then can people get out?
Oh, oh, yeah, they lock them in. Yeah.
So, so that's a concern. So now you've got somebody in there and you've got a re-lot in there. So that's one of the concerns that I would have.
Well, just with regards to all the suggestions, 'cause we received numerous suggestions via, you know, email, phone calls, Jen and I both and other people. We're, we're going through a process of examining all of those suggestions and like some of the ones that were mentioned tonight in the public participation, we're gonna vet them all. Some we're already doing, but again, we don't make every one of our plans known, some of the things, 'cause you don't wanna give the opposition the playbook. So we're gonna go through all those things, ones that will have a cost implication. We will, you know, discuss what that cost implication is and see where and, where and when we could fit it into the five-year forecast, you know, from a financial perspective. I don't wanna, cost won't be the determining factor of whether or not we're gonna do it, if it means keeping our kids safe. I, I do believe that the community, it's a cost the community would be willing to incur. You know, again, we, we wanna make sure it's, it's through consultation with law enforcement, that there are things that truly are going to be effective. There is widely different opinions about whether or not we should allow our staff, even though they have passed a concealed carry and have a permit, and whether or not we should allow them to have those in our buildings. Widely different opinions on that from, from the law enforcement community. And again, that's something I think certainly worth, worth discussing. Having armed officers in our, in our, in, in the buildings, again, I think that does change the dynamic. Our resource officers are invaluable, they're great, great additions to our staff. They, they, I believe they make us a hardened target, but the reality is, every single shooting that's happened, except for Sandy Hook, had an armed officer in the building. That's scary. So, and I, I, I won't say that that is the, the silver bullet, for lack of a better term, to solve this issue. Again, it's gonna be worth vetting as to whether or not we wanna have that as our message to the community. You know, I do think the, the things that Alicia talked about are, are far more proactive because there is no doubt, we have a mental health crisis in this country, so.
Well, and that was my next question. You know, I, I think Olentangie High School's having a mental health assembly, Mr. Griffiths? Aren't you doing a mental health assembly like in April?
Well, we had the judge come in and he did a piece of that early in the year and we will have that in, in April.
Yep. And I think something like that, you know, when you bring in the mental health professionals for the students on a regular basis, like you do with Alice training, is just as important as, you know, I think they're both highly important. You know, you do the Alice training and then you also bring in the piece with mental health training, you know, for the students. Or, you know, if you're doing Alice training three times a year, you know, what can we talk about three times a year on mental health issues? I think that's equally important to do when it comes to safety.
Maybe if I got one thing, so with Jennifer, one of the deputies, we've talked about Alice a lot, but maybe it could be good context to understand why we've chosen Alice as the preferred method versus maybe more traditional methods and what we've learned through training and, you know, 'cause more traditional lockdown-type methods.
For many years, what standard protocol was, was to do, do what we, we call now a traditional lockdown, which is where the door is closed, the lights are turned off, everyone sits in a corner and huddles in a corner. I, I think that we can see by Sandy Hook that that is really ineffective. You know, you're, you're essentially sitting ducks. We, we've got active shooters that, that are not usually great marksmen and, and we're putting them, we're putting our children in a corner. You know, after Sandy Hook, we really looked at what our, what the procedures were and, and we trusted that, you know, kind of what law enforcement and what everybody said was, was the way to do a lockdown. After Sandy Hook, everyone really started to, to look at things again. Alice really kind of stems from, from that, that, that teachers can make an active choice in a situation. They know where they are in the building, they know their kids. Can they get out of the building? Do they need to barricade in their classroom? Do they have a, a child with special needs that they need to make sure that they take care of? Alice really gives people options, specifically teachers and, and the people in the building and the students themselves. You know, I think, I truly think that, that teaching kids Alice and, and programs like OSU uses Run, Hide, Fight, which is a really similar program, program, it, it teaches them a life lesson as well, that if you're out in public, you have the right to, to do something, you don't have to sit in a corner, and, which is what we taught our kids for a long, long time. I'm, I'm really proud that, that we instituted the program. I think it's a great program and, and I think it's, it's something that we've, we worked really hard to, to work on and improve. Dave?
I have some comments. Number one, regarding the Alice program, I have a junior from one of the high schools that's mentoring my office and just in conversation, he recently went through the Alice program and he talked about how helpful he thought that that was. And it's also my understanding, and I'm not asking for an explanation, but it's also my understanding that it's age-appropriate as you go through high school, middle school, elementary, it's not exactly the same program because of their level of maturity, et cetera.
Correct, absolutely. We're not teaching the, what, what we're teaching to first graders as far as the script goes and as far as barricading and things like that. We're, we're not doing that with, we're, we're doing it in an age-appropriate manner. The script that we utilize was looked at by principals, by psychologists, by law enforcement, educators, so that we made sure that what we were presenting to the kids was age-appropriate. So, so what a first grader sees is, is very, very different than, than what we teach our kids in high school and what we show our kids in high school, absolutely.
An important part of the Alice presentation was, for me, was the introduction part of it. For instance, as you talk about what started the whole program, Columbine, where he went through it, the officers, deputies demonstrated the problems with how that was handled and how Alice was born. That was, for me, was just as informative, actually going through the hard training part of it. I think it's also important for people to, for our audience to know that the Facilities Committee, another one of our volunteer committees, is, is engaged right now in looking at security of the building, what are some of the things that we can do, as, as Mr. Rafe was making reference to, with how visitors come into the building. And they've actually gone through some plan options and in an upcoming meeting, they'll start throwing some dollar numbers to that. And they're looking at all three levels of the buildings on security of people coming into the building. So I think that's been an ongoing investigation, it's really important. And another point I'd like to make, and it's also basically a thank you to our deputies and our administration, there was an event not too long ago that came from somebody saying, "I heard something, I'll say something," and how effective that was, because they made a contact and very efficiently and very quickly, from all, all the information that I know, this situation was dealt with in a very safe and quick manner. And I'm very appreciative of how that was handled. Great cooperation between the administration and, and Delaware County Sheriff. So that, that was a great demonstration of how the organizations can work together.
We have a great group, a great group of SROs, we really do. Any other questions I can answer for you?
I just have one last comment to, to wrap things up. I think that right now, we could probably communicate with the community that this is something that bothers me is the entrance of the schools and I'm leaving and another parent's walking in. And it seems very rude to just shut the door on them, but technically I should and they should be buzzed in. So I think that just some communication with the public, like, please don't take offense to this, but this is part of our safety protocol. We really need to shut the door and you need to buzz in.
And, and that's part of what we have for the, the building secretaries. They do have a, a kind of a list of protocols for letting people in the building. And I know, I know that it feels weird to look at somebody behind you that you-
It does.
-you might know or you're see at a football game and say, "I'm sorry, you're gonna have to wait here and ring yourself in." But it's something that's important for, for the safety of our buildings and, and we are talking, some of the folks on the Safety Committee are talking with Mr. Gordon about, about change, the changes that need to happen in the buildings to kind of make those safer as well. So, yeah, I, I agree with you.
Well, thank you. Anybody else have? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Hatfield, do we have any public participation for, um, agenda items?
No, we do not.
Okay. With that said, um, Mr. Rafe, would you please present your superintendent action items?
Yes, I'll present Superintendent Action Items A through F for approval.
I'll move.
Second.
Mrs. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Spiesel?
Yes.
Sorry. It's okay. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
All right. Now, um, I will take a motion to move into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code to consider the employment of public employees. I think I'm on the wrong page. I amended. Yep, no, I'm right, okay. And pursuant to Revised Code 121.22 for the purpose of conferences with an attorney for a public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action and pursuant to Revised Code 121.22, matters required to be kept confidential by federal or, federal law or regulations or state statutes. That was a mouthful. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. With that, we will break for executive session. We will return only to adjourn. We will have no more...
We have to finish the vote.
Oh, we have to vote? So, okay.
Yes, please.
Well, let me finish the sentence. We will, we will not be conducting any, any more board business. Mrs. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mrs. Spiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
All right. We meet again here March 15th.
Yep.